9:03, we get the board of supervisors meeting called to order. Sheriff, would you mind give us an invitation?
Yes. Move by his. Well, thank you for today and thank you for allowing us to see you. Thank you for the board supervising meeting on this day, Lord God. We pray, Lord God, that we conduct the business of the county, Lord God, that you oversee every bit of our hands, our feet, our minds, Lord God, that you do what's best for your community. And as we make decisions for this community, may it line up with your will. These are men who bless and we ask you, Jesus, may they pray. Amen.
Blessed be thy name.
Blessed be thy name to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I guess everybody knows we had elections this past Tuesday or week so ago. It went my way. I think it went America's way, to be honest with you. Everybody just needs to learn how to work together. It's gonna be good to come here. I need a motion to approve the docket.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
Page there, man, there's brand and then we see it there, the correct number. At the top. That's where they're supposed to be.
Let me look at that. See what department that is.
You wanna change the motion to exclude that, but so...
I'll, uh, I'm in the motion pending the review of the claim number.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried. All right. Special presentations, if any. Any special presentations today? County business. Doug Wimberly with Neil Schaefer. Doug here? Or anybody with Doug's firm? We'll come back to that. Lawrence Harris. Yes, ma'am, he can come to podium.
I have to be first, I knew.
Well, you're not first. I had all kinds of people heading, you just sit and see them. You, you just go.
Where, where do I go? See, I told you.
Lawrence.
On behalf of Adams County National Gardeners, I'd like to thank you for letting me bring this request before you. The Adams County Extension Office out on Cartridge Point Road, that's where the master gardeners meet and four H and I don't know who, that's a lot of people. However, I've been going there about a year and the front flower bed has essentially been abandoned. The, uh, one of the other clubs had it and they weren't taking care of it, so we, the master gardeners, asked them, could we take it over? Being master gardeners and having a front flower bed full of weeds just, you know, didn't look right. So they agreed and so now it's under our purview. Uh, I have been trying to control the weeds some, but we are planning to add more soil and to plant flowers and to make it look like a, a buil- a building that is actually in use instead of abandoned. But I need a little help from the master gardeners too. I was told that the railroad ties in front, holding the soil from washing down to the parking lot, had been furnished by the supervisors sometime in the past. However, we have needed three more to make sure that it doesn't wash into the parking lot. And, uh, so I'm hoping the supervisors can help with that. Also, uh, two other things. There are some large displays in there. They're mounted on wood and that were given to the extension office and they're old farming implements and of course they're all metal. These displays are very heavy. They had them on a table, but we need, we need the room for it, you know, for the meeting room. We need those hung on the wall. So if we could get some help doing that, that would be greatly appreciated. And one other thing is, you know, there are nothing but pine trees in the grounds surrounding the office. Uh, some of those have been removed because they're dead. There is another dead one there and I would imagine that they're all just gonna slowly die off. And for that, I would like to ask your permission to plant some acorns and swamp chestnut oats where those stumps still exist. They chop the trees down, let the stumps. And I will need the cooperation of the crew that does the maintenance there so that when the little trees come up or that they don't spray them or ground up or coat them down. Uh, oats are a climax species. In other words, they will outlast the pine tree always. And of course, uh, the pines are gonna die out and the oats will live. These are swamp chestnut oats. If you wanna see what one looks like or three of them, I have three in my yard that I planted about four decades ago. And you can see exactly what they look like. You can pull in the driveway, but you can see them from the street. Two are in the front yard. One is immediately in front of the house. These are nice, uh, straight, uh, trees with a good shape, lots of leaf coverage, so they'll add a lot of, uh, cooling area to that, to that grounds around the building. So it's not just out in the sun. And again, we would only plant, I would only plant them where there's stumps because, you know, that's where a tree was, we're not gonna plant some acorns there.
Okay. Robbie, on the cross ties.
We don't have any cross ties. I have some old bridge cap, some bridge timbers that I can cut, you know, that we pulled out and it'll be something they can use.
Assist with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm on the implements. Um, could Sheriff help with that maybe? Sheriff? Nothing, nothing yet.
We'll furnish whatever hardware is needed to hang them.
She's got some implements that, uh, are heavy on a table out there at the extension office and need, need one somewhere.
Do you need hung somewhere?
Yes.
Hung walls, wow.
I wonder if you could offer some assistance with the inmate.
Yeah, we're here for our.
Okay. And there's no, the Adams County doesn't, or this area doesn't have a museum of these kind, do they? That, that might be more appropriately displayed?
Well, we got the, uh, the African Museum and, um...
Vickers.
And Vickers.
Okay, well, they don't really fit into either one of those categories. This is just...
I think that's the only, only ones we have.
Well, the extension office is a good place for it.
All right. Uh, okay, now the trees. Uh, Robbie, who cuts the grass down there?
Yeah, and we cut the trees down. I don't cut the grass. We cut the trees, we cut several of them, a pine tree down. I get that one to dead or whatever.
Are you gonna plant the trees right in the middle of the stump? With, with the, there's a hole in the big stump, in the stump?
No, no. I'm gonna plant, I'm gonna plant four acres around. And then in a couple of years, whichever one looks the strongest, I'll cut the other three down. But I need help with them not mowing around there and not doing any roundup. Uh, it would be nice. I have flagging, but I don't have anything that won't deteriorate to put down to show them not to mow there. I'll furnish the flagging, but quarter inch rebar, I can cut that, but I don't have any.
You might wanna paint a little sign or something. What about T posts? Would that mess up your...
No, I, anything that, that will let the people that do the grounds work know, don't spray and don't mow here.
Okay.
And an acorn will outgrow a three gallon tree every time. So I think it's best, I've got plenty of acorns in case anybody needs any. Uh, these are the big acres. A lot of people use it for crafts, so that might work in with that being the extension office and people wanting that kind of thing.
Okay. We'll try to get most of that stuff worked out for you.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that. Did y'all find a place to start planting a garden?
Oh, it's there.
You are gonna do it there?
It's right in front of the building, but they haven't done anything with it. It was just weeds and I asked Jason, the extension agent out there, said, can I round this up, you know? And he said, yeah, so I did that a month, six weeks ago. Of course, they're back. But, so now we've got soil there, we've got mulch, I've got the plants. We're ready to go. We just, you know, need to know what those other timbers are coming to keep it from washing. I, I think I need about three, two on one end and one on the other. And that, that place will look a whole lot better.
I'm just gonna measure what's out there and cut it to size, that's what's there.
Okay.
That's what needs to be done.
And I'll be happy to meet you and just show you where I, where I think they should go. Now, I'm no expert.
You don't mind giving, uh, Robbie, your number on your way up?
Sure will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Maria. Kristalik. Home of here.
Cruzyak.
Cruzyak? Well, I was gonna, I was gonna get that.
You're gonna get there, huh?
Good morning, thanks for being here this morning. I represent Home of the Earth Foundation and come to you again this year to request funding for the Reeds Across America. You guys have donated last year fifteen hundred dollars and you're the largest single donor, uh, in Adams County for our Reeds Across America. And we'd like to request again that we have a donation for the Reeds. We do provide, uh, the Reeds that will be laid on December fourteenth this year. It recognizes, you know, our veterans that have passed away, which is very near and dear to me as a veteran and also my husband just recently passed away. He is self-interred in that national cemetery there. So we'd like to ask again, we have eight thousand veterans buried there. Uh, we don't get, got any Reeds, of course, but we try to disperse them throughout the cemetery to represent.
Okay. Ms. Washington, is she out today? She's on the phone? Okay, is that, is that one of the projects we have already accounted for?
Appropriation.
Do one of y'all know? Can you look that up?
Oh, I think...
I'm, I'm sure it was. I don't, I don't remember, we didn't, we didn't cut anything. Can we address you as major?
Sure. Or just daddy.
She's, she's, she was a major in the United States Army?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, my father's buried in that, the new part of the National Cemetery. But, uh, yes, I'm sure you can count on our support. And, uh, I used to always get a reminder to send money myself, uh, from your predecessor.
Yes.
If you have my email address or anything, you may send me a reminder. Because if I don't have a reminder or invoice, I'll completely forget it.
Okay. I can get your line.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, the preparation sheet and a little book you have is not updated right now for this fiscal year, but I'll go check.
Okay. I don't remember cutting that.
I would personally...
It was one of those things we just...
Hey, Mr. President, we traditionally do a resolution appropriating it. The way that this donation actually comes across is through one of the statutes that allows you to do that. I think it's World War I and II Veterans Graves. And so then the resolution specifies the, how we do it legally and all that. We also traditionally pick somebody to honor for the Reeds Across America. So if y'all would like to do that, when's the reed, when's the ceremony?
December fourteenth.
Yeah, so we have till next meeting if y'all wanna come up with somebody to do it.
Okay, do we need to do a resolution to get this, um...
But again, y'all can do it next, on December.
Well, we can organize it December third so that we can order all the Reeds and have them delivered.
Okay. Uh, when it, when's the cutoff?
December third.
Okay. When's our, uh, first one? Our next meeting tonight? So we're gonna do the resolution today, is that...
We can do that and amend it if you wanna honor somebody.
Okay. I need a resolution to, uh...
I'll make a motion to, uh, get a Reeds Across America. Uh, a resolution for Reeds Across America.
All right. Motion by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried.
Another four, you can take your support.
Fifteen hundred dollars, correct. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Did anybody with Doug Wimberly's group make it in?
No, he's, he's actually, uh, he said he would, he could call in, but talking about for the change order that you were...
It says Neil Schaefer update.
I, I think it was...
Oh, you think that? Okay. Go ahead, Sheriff.
Yes. Yeah, the, uh, I think the, what was in question is the change order for the, um, International Paper Site where they were doing the, uh, the rail improvement on the, on the site. I think it was, uh, before y'all, I believe it was, I can't get it up on my phone. So I think it was somewhere around sixty-seven thousand dollar change order, which is in budget. We, we actually, uh, part of the project and part of the, basically all from the levy all the way through the, uh, through the International Paper Project. It's part of getting the rail cleaned up and serviceable where it will be able to receive cars at Phoebro. And that's what, uh, that change order reflects. It is within budget. We had seventy thousand dollars in the, uh, in the budget requested for that. I think it came in at like sixty-seven somewhere.
I, I've got the number here, sixty-six thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents.
Right. And that's, uh, and so, uh, it was, it was change order that came through for y'all's approval and of course, uh, I was, I wasn't here to last meeting and neither was Doug, so, uh, just to, just to clarify that. But it, it's not unexpected nor is it, and it is within our, our budget.
Okay. Need a motion to, for the change order for sixty-six thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Middleton. Seconded by Mr. Gaines.
Do you know how that you came up with the prices?
Any discussion?
Uh, the, the originated, oh, the original pricing originated from Natchez Railway, uh, probably, uh, going back almost two years ago now. And, uh, and there was some improvements to the, to the, uh, railway, basically one of the crossings that, uh, that's there. There was some concrete work that had to be done there in order for the engine to be able to pass safely and properly. And then, uh, the removal of some of the debris and things that are kind of approaching in the right way of the, uh, of the rail line as well as continued cleanup of the, of the rail line. But originally, uh, started with, uh, with that and as soon as, uh, with the new engine specs as well as, uh, the bid from the change order on the current rail to...
Do we originally bid this out?
Uh, y'all, yeah, no. So, uh, they, they did do an alternate bid when we bid the, the current cleanup that's going on right now and it came in like anywhere from two hundred and fifty-five, I think it was two or three bidders. But that is completely different. This was, this was putting down more cross ties, uh, putting down more rail beds, some other things. This is the, uh, I guess the simplest version of that as well as what was needed in order to get service back to, uh, back to Phoebro. Well, why not Phoebro has purchased ten, uh, ten, um, tanker cars in order to, to move their product in and out of the rail. So they're, they are, um, looking at us to, to get that. But it's not, um, it's, it is, the change order and the bids that were received, Scott, while it's the same piece of track, they're completely different in the, in the scope of work.
How do we know that the pricing was commercially reasonable to do the change order?
I talked to Doug on that. I, I mean, as far as commercially reasonable, what is, what do you mean? You know, escalation on that?
Well, you can't, you can't change pricing. Everything's required, go out for bid with a public contract and change orders are done when you discover something that you need to do. It's financially, it makes financial sense for the county to do so. Uh, so it's like usually an unexpected thing that comes up. And then you also have to show that it's a commercially, the pricing is commercially reasonable, which is why on fixed pricing contracts, we'll do a unit pricing still list. And so if we need a change order, we already have a commercially reasonable price that goes in. So, you know, if Doug can tell us what that, how he came up with pricing or whatever, sometimes people will pull, like State Aid has a list or MDOT has a list of pricing for various things. They'll reference that handbook and that's how you get a commercially reasonable price for a change order as well. So those are, that's what we have to do for, to pass state order on change order.
All right, well, I, I know that if you wanna...
Yeah.
I mean, he's told to be here.
He, he, he had conflict and he could jump that square. So if you wanna, but he is available by phone. We can probably catch him by night.
Yeah, he, I realize it's ten, almost ten percent of the total contract over.
Yes.
Name of Scott is interesting. Mr. Doug, can you hear us?
Yeah.
There's questions about the change order. First is, uh, how, whether it was commercially reasonable? How did you come up with a pricing that was commercially reasonable?
Yeah, so this, this, what we're doing here is portions of a scope of work for, uh, if y'all remember that we bid out last year for a much larger project than IP on the same line. This contractor bid on that project. He was the little bidder. His pricing here is at or below Doug's original, his original bid prices.
Okay, is this something that he did not plan on doing?
As part of this, so we did, at the same time we did this cleanup package, we did a rail repair package out there that had a much more scope of work. It was replacing like every other tie, you know, replacing a bunch of railroad spikes. Uh, we were trying to press stuff that Natchez Rail said needed to be done that, you know, we thought, well, our budget for that project was always seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars. The lowest bid we got was three hundred some odd thousand dollars. So we just did to award the project. But when the, one of the same contractors, Continental Rail, won the contract for the cleanup out at the IP site, we said, well, hey, if we can come back to you with a, you know, reduced scope of work, uh, just doing the things that just have to be done, the minimum, you know, can you give us a change order on that? And they did, and the pricing they used at or below what they, for those same items, say like a tire replacement or a sign or some grading, they were there at or below their original bid pricing.
Okay.
And this would, this would better serve the IP cleanup? Does this allow us to, the Natchez Rail will now be able to service the railways? Is that right?
Right, it's, this is, this is trying to get, because right now Natchez Rail is saying they want running for the side because the rail has these deficiencies.
Mr. Attorney.
And this is the, this is the, it's a moment to get, you know, to, to get in compliance with what they're looking for.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Mr. Attorney, listen to everything Doug said. My question is, is this legal?
Yeah. If y'all find that the improvements or modifications of the contract with better sort of purposes of our government authority, which this is... So right now the rail that we improved, we did about what? Hundred and fifty thousand on a rail spur and, uh, I suspect it's more than that. The county itself bid sixty-two thousand for rail spur, but that still wasn't enough for the Natchez Rail service that, that rail station. So this would improve, uh, the rail track would la, that rail service would now be fully functional. Uh, so it obviously will help us. Is it commercially reasonable? Yes, because we took pricing from a project that we previously bid and it's more, much like guy engineering it out. It just so happened that the person that won the bid, the cleanup, also is capable of doing the, the rail as well, so, um...
So, so my next question is, uh, we had more than one contractor to bid on it and adding sixty-six thousand dollars to the, uh, change order wouldn't put them over with the second person bid, would it?
Uh, what was this next bidder on the IP cleanup percentage? Do you know it, Doug, off the top of your head?
I don't think I pulled that up.
It's not apples apples because you're increasing the scope of the project. And the basis that you're increasing the scope of the project, you're basing that on a price that had been bid out and it was too expensive for us to do. And so we passed on that project. But with this person coming in who also bid on that other one, they were able to accept at or, or lesser pricing for it. So you don't have to, you can't say, well, this would...
Yeah, paying mobilization and we also pulled a bunch of the, um, tire replacements out of this project.
Okay. Good enough for you, Scott?
Yeah, I mean legally that, I just need to know the commercial reasonableness of the, of the pricing, how we came up with the pricing.
So we not gonna give a price on it and second people bid?
Uh, if you can pull it up, of course.
Doug, where you ever find that?
I didn't, I didn't quite, I think what, is that Ricky talking?
Yep.
What he's asking is, did the other people bid at the same amount or something or...
What he wants to know is if on the original bid for the IP cleanup, the next lowest bidder, you know, were they, with this amount that we're adding, the sixty thousand, would that push them, that next lowest bidder as the now lowest bidder?
Why didn't it?
No, no.
Didn't it?
So what was the next lowest bidder? I, I think, Ricky knows it's not apples apple. I'm still asking that question.
Yeah, I'm looking at that right now.
That was last Friday. Trash truck.
Yeah, I would have to, I would have to work that, because I... But yes, it would be an apples apples comparison, but I would have to work, take the next little bidders and hit pricing and apply it to what we're doing here. But again, that's, it was gonna be a higher number.
Based on the fact that they would have to mobilize and...
It was just only originally he hit pricing for the same one.
Yeah, and, and they're not here.
It was already higher numbers.
Yes. Okay. Okay. I think you've answered all the questions, Doug. Any more discussion?
I apologize for being there in person.
Okay. Thanks, Doug. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried.
Now, the only other thing I have, uh, just to congratulate the board on, on, uh, receiving, uh, the, uh, site selection grant, a select sites grant from EBA, uh, which is, uh, as y'all know, is, uh, three point five five four million dollars. Uh, I think it was the second largest award that they gave to the state out of the round of funding. The state, uh, the legislature, uh, gave to state roughly about forty million dollars last session to, uh, to give out for site, uh, sites across the state. It had to be a select site, which would, which the IP built with property are select sites and, uh, and it will go a long way in continuing the cleanup efforts out at the, uh, out of the IP site. It's a, uh, this project which I've just discussed... It's a, uh, uh, this project, which I've just discussed, coupled with the, uh, with the new funds are tremendous, and will put us back in a, uh, in a situation where the site is ready to be fully marketed at, at a turnkey, uh, situation. So we're excited about it, y'all should be, uh, excited about it, and we've got, uh, got a bunch of work to do, uh, with it, in, uh, engineering it, bids back out here, uh, in the next, uh, few months. So, uh, appreciate it, and again, congratulations to y'all for that, and we look forward to continuing to work, uh, work with you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, city government business, if any. Yes, ma'am. Bar Mout report. Ned, anybody?
You can ask the sit.
You go, yeah.
I'm Kim from the Tax Service Office, I have a proposal for a decrease in property. We have, uh, property at two fifty-one A Ward, Camaro, that has been being double assessed for some years. That was recently brought to our attention. And I have a boarder asking that we can get this corrected so that this taxpayer's not paying taxes on the property that no, that does not belong to her.
My favorite thing to ask is how much money are we losing here?
Forty-three dollars and thirty-six cents.
Okay. Uh, do you need any more information? All right, do you have that order that I can sign? Uh, I need a motion. Move by Mr. Gaines. Second, taken by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any nays, motion carried?
Good morning, board. And that fails for Adams County, E nine one one dispatch. Hogsby heads from November the first through November eighteenth. Adams County gets though, had two sixty-three, Natchis PD had seven forty-two, Natchis Fire Department had thirteen. Also, I want to discuss, and I want this to be spread across the states again, we in a critical state without equipment and a dispatch. Um, equipment's going out every day, which they told us, uh, because it's old. We had to call Jackson Com to come down to patch it up for us, which we couldn't bring it back up. They charged us seven hundred and fifty-five dollars for maintenance, for coming down to patch it, but they also let us know if it goes down again, they can't bring it back up. Um, so I don't know what we's gonna do, because we're losing connection with the officers on the street, which is officer safety that we're at. Uh, they've been communicating with us on the phone, and our radios go down, but it's not good for the citizens of Adams County, if we lose contact. Also, uh, we still having, uh, showers from upstairs. As a matter of fact, it's going on now as we speak, but the toilets is overflowing, it's going down in our radios. So, uh, I don't know what y'all wanna do about that, you know? We need to try to expedite, uh, getting our equipment, service office.
Scott, where are we at with getting a new system and getting at them in the building? What are we waiting on?
Getting them into the new building? Just, say, we just need to get an authorization to move them into going, uh, you know?
What about the radios?
Well, they're gonna need to order new equipment and that kind of thing.
I have at least a purchase.
Could you, could you, uh, send a copy?
Yeah, we also, before we could get the equipment in there, uh, the high T guys working on bringing the fiber for getting it from point to point. Um, we need a, a air conditioner that Johnny and I got folks on, uh, to keep the cooling area, keep it cool where we're putting the tiles at, and we're gonna also need a generator. We have folks on all of that, you know, that need to be moved forward, and we got different folks from different places, and she does have. We picked it out the cheapest way, so.
Uh, is the city helping with any of that, or they, they just have a monthly site?
All we do with the city is, we pay, they take the average price of our dispatchers, including them, and they pay us for ten of those people, and that's a flat expense, no other expenses thought about or whatever. And it's the same way with the fire, it's simply cost per man hour, and, and that's your only expense, so.
What, what do all those invoices come to, to do what you're saying?
Okay.
Needs to be done.
I don't have a spreadsheet with me, I gave Scott a copy, Stephanie a copy, but I can't get it from an office to bring it back over if they don't have.
For equipment, you traditionally do at least purchase on those anyway, your first note is traditionally not. It's annually usually when we do one of these, so we've come on next budget year, um, you know? It's what this building is for, or it's what we got it, you know?
Uh, I think it's time we, we got, move forward with that. Uh, we've got a deadline coming up on the CARES Act money, um, to, to show what we're, what we're gonna do with it, I think, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, there is a deadline to show that that money's been perfected.
Excuse me?
By next board needs.
Yes, okay, so if we have all those numbers and that, uh, we, uh, we're probably just gonna need another CARES Act, since we don't have it anywhere else, do we? I'm asking you, like, your.
Yeah, and Annette?
County Administrator.
Annette could have been saving significant amounts of money, too, on, on, we had a meeting, what, last week?
Yeah, we had a meeting, we're gonna get to that next, too.
Yeah, so, very, very positive on that, hopefully it works out.
Well, we see that getting approved from the board, so.
Which, I'm not sure if it could take, say, six figures in her budget, which is all ours to, you know, it's all our savings, so it's a good thing about our, our contract, that we're able to get pricing down and so forth, and when equipment's paid off, you know, that's a good thing.
We have to get the furniture first, we still waiting on approval for the grant for the furniture.
Yeah.
But we can do a maxed-in furniture in there, but, uh, the back store, only generator, and the air conditioner for, when they bring in equipment, we already had it set up. Johnny asked me to come in for the board to see that I get it approved, they can move forward with that, force the generator and air going, what, towels on.
Yeah, that probably needs to be done, because if you move the views in there, you don't have the air conditioner in there, uh. Yes.
Uh, I think she need to go on, uh, to her office and, and, and get whatever she need to get, and come back, and, and let us get it, and by next board needs, we, we can do whatever we gotta do. We already have those numbers.
Could, could y'all get all those numbers together?
Yeah, I got the numbers, I gave it to Scott, he should have them. I, I did a spreadsheet.
You do have the numbers together?
Yes, he asked me for a spreadsheet, I gave it to him, on that, and so just definitely, so.
Between the two of us, we'll, and it should be lined up, and these are the things that we're doing, and this is the cost that it'll be, and so the board can look at it and say, this is what she's asking to be done.
Could you get that together in the next hour?
Sure.
And, and so we can, we can pass that, so we can get it on the books? Or you?
I can do it.
Okay.
Also, um, I have a meeting with Scott and Stephanie, since, uh, the city, uh, stated that the attorney and our figures for our raise is too late, but they wasn't having to counter it, um, I had to move some money around in my budget for it, see if I get my people ready with it, and just we approve from the board.
Okay, do you have, do you have that written down, so we can see, or do, if you don't have that with Stephanie?
Yeah.
She sat down with Stephanie and, and me, or whatever, and, I mean, we went through every little line item, you know, there's, you know, to, to be able to pay for those raises, those step raises that she's asking for, for her people. I believe that Stephanie, uh, was good with them.
Stephanie, you on the phone? Stephanie? Okay, I guess I need a motion pending Stephanie's response on that.
Cause she should have like a sheet showing what all needs to be changed in and out.
So, run that by me again, we gonna, uh, take some money out of the original budget to get raises to employees in, uh, E nine one one.
Step raises, yes, apparently.
In my budget, also, um.
That's a chief's request.
So, when I mentioned Scott, is, uh, the agreement that we made with the city, because I know when it's time for the firemen to get raises, uh, we gonna have to pay for that.
That's correct.
So if they covering ten, uh, people in E nine one one, why do we have to pay for that, when they supposed to be covering that?
So it's, so they don't do the same thing to us with firemen, for instance, in the mid-year, they would increase their salary of firemen, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. We wouldn't have a way of generating that, of getting it, because we've already set our mileage. And it's likewise the same thing for dispatch, and that's why I explained to Annette, is your raises or, or costs is determined as of July first of each year, and we get ten out of, you know, uh, the average cost of ten dispatchers. And same thing for firemen, I think it's sixteen firemen, the average of them is July first, so that's, so they can't swap. And I explained it to Annette, and Annette went through her budget, line by line, and with the county administrator, I was also there, too, we've seen what we could cut to try to make up for her, her raises that she's been, you know, telling her people that she's gonna get. And she was able to do that on things that are likely to be able to be cut, so it's not things that are, you know, hope and prayer, these are genuine things that could be cut.
Stephanie on the phone.
Stephanie, you there?
So, at the end of the day, it's not gonna make the budget go up.
Not at all, not at all, and in fact, by doing this with Annette, there's a good chance, we have a, we're doing a pilot program on things, but there's a good chance it's gonna be a significant savings to her budget, so, you know?
Okay.
Optimistic that it'll be, be.
I need a motion to approve, uh, the step raises for, for the E nine one one.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Gray?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any more discussion? All in favor? Uh, any nays? Motion carried?
Mr. President, I don't think I, I don't guess what I.
She's gonna, you, you do have the, do you have a sheet yourself with the amounts? Cause, uh, I don't think Scott has it.
I can get it, I'll, before we leave, I'll get it over to you. And, and Annette, you need to go, have you had the HR sheets to pay in loopholes?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Will they go over those to you?
Also, um, Apple, we're looking at the budget, um, with two thirty degree with ATNT bill, that bill is ten thousand, some hundred dollars, so ATNT, we were saying they're for the phones. Uh, after giving ATNT a call and registered a bid, which I think is extremely high, um, they were telling me that I can do wireless phones for nine one one, which would bring our bill from ten thousand, six hundred something dollars down to two hundred and forty dollars, is that correct, Scott?
That's what they were saying, now wisely, we say, well, we wanna save.
Yeah. I don't know what kind of phones those are, and what effects they have, and pros and cons. So I agreed to do, well, we asked to do a thirty-day trial on at least one of the phones, and she would work for us, because it would be a bit significant savings for the county. Um, but however, they want us to sign a agreement to that during the thirty-day trial, so I'm asking for a permission from the board, cause I passed a motion, Scott, to do a thirty-day trial and see whether it worked on at least one of our phones in nine one one, where we could save that ten thousand, six hundred something dollars
So move.
That they're charging.
Okay, move by Mr. Middleton?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Any nays, motion carried?
Okay, I have one more item that's to return, while I'm waiting on that, I will get your paper.
Okay, thank you. Next?
Good morning, board. Senator, I'm at the Service Office for the county. Uh, don't really have anything you can, uh, pass on to you, but, uh, events, uh, for veterans sake, it went, uh, it went off real good, and, uh, like I have a note, I've been gone, uh, this week to the, uh, conference, three days, the, uh, night office will, uh, none of it, none of it's coming on my list, so.
All right, sound good.
Do you have anything for me?
I got something for you, but I can get it to you after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, appreciate it.
Good morning, getting vice purpose word for Adams County Board of Supervisors. Um, the first thing I'd like to go over, I need approval for sole sourcing, um, to retrieve evidence off the cell phones for the, um, Sheriff Department, it's twelve thousand, four hundred and ten dollars through Gray shift.
Okay, and that money's coming from?
I'm telling you, you wanna know the, um, it's coming out of their budget. You wanna know which?
They're asking to adjudicate it as a sole source, software often is a sole source.
All right, I just wanna make sure it's clear with, uh, Brandy and, uh, Paige.
So.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carried, any nays, I'm sorry, motion carries?
Okay, next, um, I have, I just was following up about those, um, under advisement about the pressure washing, we come up for the courthouse, do we wanna come back to that, or wait later, just to bring it back up just?
Yeah, I think we, uh, need to eventually rebid that, or we probably need to wait till the winter's over.
So wait on it, okay.
Is that all right with y'all?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's all I have, if you have any comments.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Brad on the, a little conference, I mean, he has something.
Brad? Brad, are you on? Hey, how you, how you doing this morning?
I'm doing great.
Okay, uh, Darrell's at the podium.
Okay, he can take, I'll do that for you to do.
Yes.
Okay, uh, I know he wanted to, uh, do a temporary hire for a visiting home for his, uh, for the personal management, and he wanted to get approved through the board.
Okay, is that a? Is that a replacement hire?
Yeah, yeah, what it is, you know, Darrell leaving on the first, she's gonna be a temporarily hired, uh, she don't get no insurance or nothing like that, so they just to cover me, that cover up on the fire side, and also on the personal management side, nine days.
Okay, there any paperwork goes with that?
Yeah, uh, I think, Captain Mester, she has paperwork. Yeah, she, she hired a contractor, we just gonna move up, I think it gonna be a bid price, uh, and I'm gonna have it at December fourth, the, for the approval, but she don't start until December.
Okay, does that need to be approved today, Scott?
You're approving a contract with some temporary worker, it starts, he starts the day of the board meeting? Yeah, if you, if not, you need to go ahead and prove it.
Yeah, Scott, you heard, she's already a contract worker now, but she just gonna move to, uh, temporary status employee, uh, in December.
Yeah, is, is her, is her contract been changed at all?
Uh, yeah, it's gonna change, yeah.
Then you go ahead.
But it's gonna be, but what I'm saying is she won't be, she won't be a contractor worker, she'll be able to have a temporary absentee employee.
You know, that's, December second's her first meeting, is that right? That's the first day of December workday anyway, so as long as she doesn't start working, you expect changes until December second, you can get her in. If she works December first, she's gonna be working her whole contract.
Okay, well, I, I, we'll, we'll get, we'll get the, uh, the, the, that's a bit of paperwork, uh, to you, Scott.
Appreciate it.
Okay, uh.
If you can get to me before Friday, I'm taking the next week home.
Okay, uh, we are looking to extend Byrne Man, December fifteenth, just looking for a pool. So, and we can, uh, if y'all approve here, send a, just, we will, our board just, you know?
Okay. He, he said to the fifteenth?
Yeah, fifteen, these.
Yeah, fifteen December.
Uh asking for a motion for to continue the burn ban through December the fifteenth. I think uh Mr. Gaines has some burning he needs to be. I don't think he's for that.
Why, why are they doing it? It's been raining, it's wet out there.
So move, man.
Motion moved by Mr. Gray. Any second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Uh any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carries.
Alright, that's all I have to do, sir.
Appreciate it.
Hey, President.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I have one more thing for the board, uh we need to start looking at uh y'all polling places in y'all district, because we have a polling place that lost power during the last election. So we wanna make sure that we put a plan in place, or have these polling places that have generators, uh to make sure they're working in service. Uh so we gonna be trying to do a uh a a survey and study to see which ones that need them and need to be fixed, because like I said, we don't, you know, wanna have another test that might be having across point church on the last election.
Okay. We'll uh take it under advisement.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Brad, yes, sir.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Uh I have uh a prom, uh two promotions to put before you guys. One of them is Antonia Terrell, she's been promoted to shift supervisor due to supervisor Beckham's resignation. She went to Congress somewhere, she's gonna need a couple more hours an hour, so she could have. So I'm promoting Antonia Terrell, who was a full-time regular officer to her slot.
Okay.
And you should have it there, if you don't, I got it signed, copied by Mr. Jefferson.
Hour rate of fourteen dollars an hour.
Yes, sir.
Annual rate of twenty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty, and the other one, go ahead and say his name.
Robert Sharney Borchess. Because this other girl's being promoted, I had to take one of my part timers, turn her into a full timer, so that's what the other paperwork is.
Okay, and that hour rate is twelve dollars an hour.
Yes, sir.
Annual rate of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Yes, sir, that's it.
I need a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Gaines.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any names? Motion carries.
Alright, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Uh President Bush, you should have a reversion uh tire grant, fair for one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Okay. Alright. Do you have your tire grant for one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars, any motion?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Middleton, seconded by Mr. Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any names, motion carries.
Okay, uh next thing I have, I just done a picture up there, twenty-three Wilkerson Road, it's a dead tree laying up the road, take a bucket truck to. Get it down, not just gonna be on pile lines and fences, I just need permission to advertise, just by taking it down or get it down over the counter.
So move.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Gray, uh any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carry.
We have a rain event, uh I know uh Meg reached out to the supervisor and said they wanted to turn any EWP's, they want to turn into thirteen thousand circle. Uh Churchill Keaton Road, so it's pretty exciting, so I'm gonna get. Now, I'll do this right event.
Alright, any motion for that?
No, not really, I just brought it up, y'all, y'all know just, that's the site, it's a little bit over the top, the supervisor area.
Okay.
Next thing I have, uh President Wilson, he been discussing uh Kingston Road from sixty-one to Ogden.
Yes.
Uh so if some money available, or I'm trying to get some money. Um I've done the research and uh I got a number here. It's uh two point three mile, one point four mile each wide, and an overlay and with uh striking and reflectors, the other two is a two mile section with overlay, so with the three point four mile from Kingston to Ogden. Um. Looks like it'll be about one point one plus one point two million dollars with the wide and and overlay that we striked.
Alright, um I don't know what our limitations are with uh lieutenant governor, uh. He said it would come with a match, and what I was gonna ask the board for was uh like four hundred eighty-five thousand out of CARES Act, I don't know that we're gonna need it all. Uh I haven't used any money in District Two, um ju- just to be on standby in case this project, uh he gives us some money, he might, I don't know what he's gonna do. He said it would come with a match, but he didn't really discuss how much, if it's gonna be ten percent match or uh twenty percent, uh I just have like to have it in lieu. I mean, that, that is a motion.
What was the motion?
That we have a match set aside through the CARES Act, uh we don't know what the match is gonna be yet, but I'd like to set aside four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars just in case.
Let me ask a question for for the motion, uh Scott, if we uh decide to match four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars with CARES Act money and don't receive the money from the lieutenant governor, would that still be considered as obligated? Because we have had this money obligated by the next board meeting, so if we don't get that money, would that mean this money was obligated?
Yeah, I will make sure that that's the, we have the right answer on that.
Uh I would uh.
My guess is yes, but I don't wanna just guess when it comes to worry.
If for some reason uh that money doesn't come through, I'd still like to use the money on Kingston Road anyway, and that that first section, it needs to be widened, so we we could do some of that with that project from the start of Kingston Road to maybe fires out. Second, okay, motion. I make the motion, Mr. Gaines, seconded motion, any more discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries.
The next thing I have, uh workout, road for workout December fifteenth, coming back in February sixth. Yeah, Kyle twenty-four seven, you know, same routine every year.
You planning on working it?
Yep. Sometimes do anyhow, but some of us do, some of us get to enjoy it. That's all I have.
I'm trying to think of something to bug you about, but it's not coming to mind right now.
I, I gotta push.
You don't have to do it, there's plenty of my, they do do it.
Uh.
All week.
Just the doctor.
Yes, sir.
Uh the name of that road was Prince Edition, with the hole in front of the later house. Okay, we got a no dumping sign down at the end of that road, but they gonna start dumping.
In the curb.
On the side up there. It 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 shouldn't cause that much.
Pull the sign down, because you know, if you had the sign right there at the curb.
Nah, it's, it's all up on the side, they gonna start dumping, it shouldn't cause that much to clean it up.
Why don't y'all put up some game cameras?
I'm sorry, ma'am, you're not supposed to be talking, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
But to answer your question, they cut the trees down and steal.
Okay, uh Robbie, I did have some, I was in Home Hardware this morning, and uh I I told, thanks to o- older gentleman for his service, and he fought in Korean War. He wants to uh run uh around Washington Baptist Church on Old eighty-four.
Yeah.
He said there's a pretty big hole in the road right in there, maybe where it comes off, right off the road or on the edge of the road.
You know, me and Mr. Hendrick was working on that before Mr. Hendrick passed, it's a lift.
Okay.
They come out of the church far from lot, and get out of road, it's about three inch lift up there.
Call of duty.
Overlay, we could work this up out.
Okay.
We didn't get that far.
Well, I I just said, yes, sir.
Okay, I look into it, like that, me and Mr. Hendrick had already discussed.
Okay.
Robbie, can we get some no dumping signs on Carthage Point, please?
It's under that.
Where, I mean, just up and down it just.
Right when you go through the gates.
I see the start, and I can see them.
Right when you go through the gate, they dump.
Carcasses.
That's right.
Uh now this was trash.
The sign should say, we have dumping sites here and here, I mean, why do people continue to do that? I know.
There's some consequences for doing, you don't continue to do it.
Just for the record, we have stroke people for the legal dumping.
Do what now?
I say just for the record, we have stroke people for the legal dumping, everybody supervising that scene, and everybody that Mr. Dollar that sent has been issued citations.
How are we coming on those tire uh dumpsters, that, because I had a guy tell me the other day, I had named some more names, and I, because he wanted to get off the ankle monitor. I think he turning his sister right now.
Probably would. You work it on it.
Thank you, Robbie.
I thank the board, Mr..
Uh good morning, Board.
That's hard to believe in, but I swear. How you doing this morning?
Doing well, uh more than I roll, they moved forward construction, um they've been hoping to start installing the pipe in your Dixie Road sometime this week. Um so we will be good on that. Um so EWP project C zero four four that's lofting lane, working the ride of churchyard road, um we'd like to try and tie in that project uh next week. And with the timing set up in no second board meeting December, we'll have to have a deal, you know, in January, it's that first board meeting in January for that project.
I got a question, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
If we get, whatever we need to get back. Uh what, what this individual got going on on Lofton Road, I I think it will be for us to call for a special call meeting, where we can go and get Lofton Road uh started, man, because. Uh this man has lost so much property, and I don't even know the money that we received from from the EWP, gonna be able to fix the additional erosion that happened over there since since we applied for the money. So I'm just throwing it out there, if you can get all this information back in time to matter, uh maybe we can have a special call meeting just to go on, do what we gotta do, where where we kinda give him some relief over there.
I'm gonna have to look at the dates and make sure that we have enough time, that we have, have advertised two weeks in a row, and I can open the bids until the sixteenth day after that last.
Sixteen or what?
The sixteenth day after that last advertising.
And that's gonna be around when?
Somewhere in the week of Christmas.
No, 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 we ain't late. Thanks anyway.
Um and the last one is, the last thing I have is on the other EWP C zero four five, um plans are under review by NRCS, so now we requesting authorization to advertise that project, once NRCS has approved it, and all the right of ways have been acquired, and now it's those.
That makes sense, go ahead and, that way as soon as we have one, he can go ahead and stick them out for advertisements, but makes sense for me.
I wanna go ahead and get authorization, so I'm gonna get everything, I don't have to come back and work for it.
Yeah, I mean, why, because really, it's just formality, what he hit does at any point.
Alright, need a motion?
So move.
Need a be. Moved by Mr. Gray.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm saying fly, and that would be, as soon as he hands me the right of ways, I get started on getting them too, so there's no, no delay. I mean, that's kinda what y'all are telling us to do.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carries.
Are there any more questions or anything from the board?
Where are we at? I know we spoke briefly, Burke Road, what, what needs to be done?
Burke Road, I reached out to say, they said they are, only they're waiting on is for M dot to release the funds for the project, so he asked me to reach out to Ms. Merle, he's gonna be out in November. Try to try to get those funds released, so we can get full of that project.
To the bed?
Yes, so M say that he is saying, okay, we're ready to advertise, they've done that process.
Okay.
M dot has a different right of way process, so we're waiting for M dot to say that we can advertise, once M dot say we advertise, and say they who's managing the project will say, okay, go on, go on advertise.
Two and a half years later. Um.
Welcome to M dot, state of regulations, so we need to let them come down here and fix that bridge and move it onto the progress.
Yeah. Um, do you need anything from the board to do a temporary bridge?
I've already got it, it was, you know, fifteen thousand, eighteen fifteen thousand.
You're ready to go.
Board already approved that sometime back, I'm just waiting on.
Approved, but you don't do it.
Um, I think we still got a few uh EWP's and the pipes have been, been in there for a while, and and they keep getting delayed or asking for extensions. Could, could you make sure those get done? I don't know what's holding them up.
So just, so what happened is, so we got to do this, let's set up EWP's, you can get a good amount of time to work on those. But we had a remark, a deadline on June, that was like three months, that's the design, man, so we had to get an extension. Then once you get a design, you have to also have to get the right of way required, that's required, so sometimes a right of way takes a little extra time, because you can't, you know, find the the property owners or whatever, and that requires something, so we just.
I just know that e- every time it rains, every one of those gets a little worse, and it's, it's a bad rain event, they get a lot worse, and then. The amount that we're gonna get's not gonna cover the amount of cost, it's gonna cost to fix it. I know that's an ongoing problem. And uh with the government, I know it's delay, 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 but it just doesn't work for me. Okay.
Yeah, of course, of course, yeah, right. Right, and where she finally get to hit is uh. A lady talked to me yesterday about the bridge where George Minney used to live, is that in the city limits? And the city need to handle that?
Yeah.
So we contact the city.
I've talked to somebody, called you, it was about that, it's been a while, but.
Let's see, I ca- I call.
The job, talk to somebody, they said that bridge terrible, I don't know, I'm just, the name is missed.
Oh, my God. Put it across the.
The park.
Okay.
It's a little concrete bridge.
Yeah. Okay, you got anything else? Alright, anybody got anything else? Okay, thank you. Park now reports.
I need, I want, I need to come back before I go, but.
Oh, you know, Debbie, you can come up and then, then apparently sheriff's got a long.
It's a bad angle.
Yes.
Before uh, Miss Debbie, Germany?
Germany.
Germany?
Yes.
Before she get started, I wasn't there, but I just wanna come, since she a celebrity, I just wanna congratulate her on being named that cheese another year.
Thank you. Um just real quick, um this is coming Friday, uh November twenty-second, from nine to eleven, the CJCC is having a meeting at the Natchez Grand, of which the needs assessment committee or group is doing a presentation. And the reason, uh some of you are on that board, Warren, you're on that board and got a message about that, um at this time not including supervisors, to me, you're welcome to come. Because they're adding some conversation from this meeting to then meeting with you all in January. Uh we brought the date up of December fifth or something, but that's not gonna work out, so uh it'll be at the end of the of January, when they'll meet with you all, with the completed needs assessment meeting. So I just wanted you to have that on your hands, and it'll be from nine to eleven, Friday at the Natchez Grand. And it'll be from nine to eleven, Friday at the Natchez Grand.
It would hurt for some of y'all, sure. And listen in, though.
I mean, you'll just maybe hear it twice, but not bad thing.
Morning, boys.
Morning.
Ready to face on your picture?
I'm just joking with you. And I really mind, it's, it's the nation.
Hey, but that's democracy, that's democracy, and uh, moving on. Uh, I do have a resignation letter here for Michelle Martin. Uh, and I'll pass this on to you all, I'll pass this on to you all. President Wilson, we do have a new hire that you should have in front of you, and can they rehire them? A new hire and a rehire.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the resignation.
Some move.
Moved by Mr. Gray. Seconded, seconded by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't have any, uh.
You don't have a new hire?
My folder is empty.
Okay.
Uh, so I did not have it. One of them should be Gussel, and the other one should be here.
The rehire is here. Percy Perry.
Yes.
Hour rate of sixteen eighty-one. Annual rate of seventeen thousand or eighty-two forty. Rehire.
He's part-time.
And, 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 part-time, and the uh, new hire, Tyler Gussler.
Yes.
Sixteen eighty-one an hour, annual rate of thirty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-four eighty. Need a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. Need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
Uh, I do wanna say, but I do appreciate Miss Debbie Hudson, uh, for working with the CJCC committee. That is very important, not only to the jail, and, and hopefully we can find some funding, because she has been doing this all prolonged. And hopefully we can find some funding to take care of some of her costs for all the running and things of that nature, but she has done a fine job so far helping us to get to where we need to be in this process. And I just, I can't say thank you enough after what we've been through, so. I do have something else for the board, the, I don't know if County Administrator's online or not, is she, is she not online? Okay.
Stephanie, are you there?
Okay. I'm just gonna bring it up to you all then, so y'all can be aware of this. We haven't communicated with the County Administrator about the vehicles, she gave us a number to work with then. We're actually below that number. I'm not presenting this today, but I wanted y'all to be aware that it's coming, cause we haven't communicated with her in regards to this, we have narrowed it down, and the reason why I bring it.
Stephanie? Yeah, okay, we wanna make sure you were listening.
And the reason, and the reason why I'm bringing it up, because by next meet, I'm actually gonna be asking for this. And the only reason I'm telling you all this in advance, to communicate, is because I don't wanna lose the vehicles that are on the ground, that are on the ground right now there. After, they've already told us that after this cutoff, they're not gonna even make no more this year. So, I'm just bringing it up. I'm, we'll get back with County Administrator, and we'll represent it to the board, hope by next year. Um, the other thing is, Miss Catherine Bryant's check, I know y'all seen all the emails and texts going forward in reference to the CJCC committee and the needs assessment. Something screwed up in the mail, and so, I've been, I've gotten involved with it, and I know Miss Germany has been helping as well, and I talked to accounting, and accountant sent me the track, and I see the check is on the way back. Now, it's a second invoice that needs to be paid, I, I hadn't seen the document, so I'm not sure if it's on there, I know it was submitted. But what I'm gonna ask the board to do with is to counsel, as long as I'm asking to counsel that check that's on the way back, to reissue it that along with the second invoice, and I would ask permission to me to send it off, to see if like, I don't know who get mail to her. If that's okay for the board, I'm asking permission.
Who, who we sending it to?
Miss Catherine Bryant's detention, it should be, I think it's Detentions LLC, if I'm not mistaken.
Is she on the ZOK?
I think it's on there.
Your other one was approved, it just.
It was, yeah, it was approved and it was sent, but for some reason, like for the last, ever since it's been approved and sent for about a month now, it's been out of the mail. And I've been able to get stuff to her. Matter of fact, I've mailed three things to her, you know, in regards to this needs assessment, so I'm just asking for, y'all don't understand, but I'm asking for permission, but how we can send this?
So, so, President, Sheriff, so what are you saying, after we approve it, then you go get the check and you gonna be responsible for sending it to?
Yes, sir.
Who else?
That's exactly what I'm asking for.
Now, I'm looking, I, I, you seen anyone?
Yes.
Sheriff, I see one invoice uh, for September and another one for October, is that the only two?
Yes, those are the two that I'm referring to, and like I said, they had already cut the previous check that's in it, but I'm tracking it, and they, that, when it got to Riley, North Carolina, then they sent it back for some reason.
The one on this document, the one on this document's nine thousand one hundred forty dollars.
That's, that's the second one, yes.
Yeah.
The other one for September would have been the one that I think.
Yes, it should have been like twenty-four thousand or something.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Twenty-four one seventy-four eighteen.
Yeah. So I'm just, just asking for permission to do that, y'all.
Let me ask a question, so once they send the other check back?
Yes, sir.
Then we gonna void it and make another check out?
Yes, sir, I have to do a stop payment on it, to the bank.
It's on the way back here. It's on the way back to accounting, just, just track on it. Okay, um, I just want you all to keep Wild Dog County Brad saying, you know, they had a mass shooting down here. Yeah, yesterday, like two days ago, I believe, down in Wild Dog County, but they had one at home, county now they had one in Wild Dog County. And you all know what's happening on locally, so I'm gonna plead to the public here locally too, I'm looking right at Cameron Axe for you all's help in this community. To say we were better than what we are with all these shootings, and, and, and to the people doing the shit, leaving some folks out of it, and put the guns down. Hopefully we see you all soon, though. But I'm asking for the public's help, though, the courage, you see something, you say something, you know something, we need to know, because we don't need anybody to be here, especially innocent people. Last two things I have is, I don't know who got the tree limbs cut in front of the courthouse, but I am extremely appreciative of that, because we kept a lot of stuff going on downtown, between gays and waters and everything. And so, whoever got that tree cutting and, and off those power lines, thank you for saving us a few lives, that's all.
I, I think the uh, city of Natchez has been doing a lot of that, uh, clearly I've seen that truck, even, I even saw Dan out there.
Oh, God.
I'm like, Dan, if they cut that limb, it'll lift that limb up about four, five inches, so let him cut that limb. So he, so they, yeah, they're trying, trying, uh, uh, I've got permission to cut some limbs coming off of Winchester, where you're trying to turn a home to shit, you can't see. So, so I talked to the owner of Dunley, and he said, yeah, you've cut those limbs.
If you go and look at how those poles are bowing from where they treating the limb on the poles for so many years, I'm just grateful. Matter of fact, if you look at it, there's still chunks of wood on the power lines, cause it was, the line, the tree grew around the line, and so I'm very grateful there. Let me know what's on the side of the check, thank, thank you all for keeping that.
Sheriff, I'm emailing folkkeeping right now.
Okay.
Uh, we, we, we need to make a decision on right now, I, I don't have a problem with it, cause uh, we ain't gonna meet no more till when? And the check's gonna be available by then.
Yeah, I, do we, do we need to make a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay, that, on that check, it's being returned, and then it's stolen, and you're gonna let him ma- mail it?
Yeah, need to make a motion on that, it's gonna prove.
Okay.
No, no, the part where he gonna get the check and mail it, so that's okay, right? Okay.
So, so, uh, Brandon, you gonna let her know the council of?
Yes, sir, right now.
Okay, thanks.
You gonna let them know that you get the checks to the sheriff, where he can mail it?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, I hate that you didn't make the uh, this, this speech by Tony Hoffman at AC and at Cathedral, and uh, the guy was excellent. I've never seen students pay that much attention, to, for an hour and twenty minutes, nobody moved. Uh, and, and they were very respectful, and, and his message, message basically was, if you got a question, even if it's for one of your parents, ask the question. Don't, don't sit there and think that your parents don't love you, because they don't come to your ballgames, cause they're probably perking, you know, but, but in a kid's mind, that just doesn't register. But, there were about five or six people from Natchez High that were there, that came, one of them was the detention officer or the officer, uh, Davis.
Uh, uh, yes, uh, and, and they uh, they got his card, and I think they're gonna bring him back to Natchez at some point, and let him speak to the Natchez High students, because his message
is, is one of, um, potential triumph and complete failure over that very issue, and uh, and also getting talked into, just, or just giving up, cause he, he didn't ever ask a question to his parents. He started smoking weed, and that led to harder drugs, he ends up in prison, and not in the Olympics where he was headed. But uh, he eventually got to go to the Olympics as a coach, but, but his story was such a great story, the way he was, but he kept their attention. And it's a real good message for, for kids, uh, uh, to, if you have a problem, find somebody that you can talk to, whether it's your parents or whatever, and just talk to somebody.
I'm glad y'all did it, because, you know, we as adults in this generation, we haven't really cared for our, or choose our words wise. You know, we sit here and we say that, you know, this generation is weak, and, and that they don't care, that's, that's not what, that's not what we, I said. They place in an entirely different set of circumstance, growing up now, with instant access and a phone, than what we were back then, we didn't have a phone, we still send a carrier piece and all this other stuff, you know? They have, in the process of their home, thousands of people can, can get at them in a phone, so, that, that burden is heavy, so they hear that message and just know the mental health side of that thing, where in his mind, he's confused that you don't care versus, you know, versus uh, the parents could be working for whatever reason, that, that speaks volumes to that. Where we really, how it's doing, we really do like easy things, so I applaud that for doing that, and I'm glad to hear that Jeep was over there, so that they can bring it, so that message can be spread for all, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, the, the guy had a little bit of social anxiety disorder, and, and kind of, you know, a lot of kids are pulled back away from people, and that's the exact wrong thing to do. It was funny, because we were ten or fifteen minutes early at Cathedral, and, and I, I said, you wanna shoot some basketball? You know, he, this guy could, anywhere on the court could hit a three, anywhere. So Vincent Davis walks up to him, and he says, I bet you it takes you eight times from right here to hit a three, he said, you wanna bet your retirement on it? And Vincent, Vincent, uh.
No.
And he, he drilled one time and shot from right there and sank it, and, but he was, he's a world-class athlete, you know, in any sport, but he just got off of the wrong foot, and, and because he didn't think somebody cared, and it, it's, it was, it was a shame, he was a number one BMX rider in the world, at one time going to the Olympics and just blew it.
See what you just said, though, they about to wait, now, when you got, you feeling like that with people, and you add social media, and all this technology that people have, like it can get through you to a game, that's what sex offenders do, it's about, it's video theft, so, yes, for video thefts.
Well, I just hope that uh, the school board allows him to come speak, I know they got the money through the government to do that, and he, he would be an excellent, Ricky, you'd really like this guy, he's, he was, he was a top-notch guy. Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. President, I, I just wanna piggyback on what everybody been saying, and uh, especially the sheriff, uh, about the uh, what we got going on in uh, these other counties, and especially what we got going on in Adams County. Uh, I know y'all realize, uh, we had a serious shooting yesterday, if you don't know. And uh, a couple weeks before that, a young lady got killed, all this in where I live. And uh, we just got the wrong spirit right now, uh, floating around in this world, and I, I don't know how you change it, but I know we need to get these prayer warriors together, and they need to try to pray this negative spirit that we got going on in this world. And people re- need to realize, back in my days, they always used to tell me, you don't do what I do, you do what I say. We don't have those kind of kids no more, kids do what they see you do. So if they see you acting a fool, they gonna act a fool, and you can't tell them not to act a fool, because you acting a fool. So, I, I just think we gotta lead by example. You ready for my report?
Uh, we gotta do more to, anybody, any more departmental reports? Um, okay, I've got two things left, I've got um, the quote, and all of you have a copy of the quote for uh, the nine one one fourteen Feltes Street. Looks like about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars that we're gonna have to pay, uh, then we got the four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of uh, equipment that is actually possibly going to be a lease purchase. So we have the numbers before us. Scott, do you wanna handle that, where that money's gonna come from, or, or we need to talk to Stephanie, or uh, do we have the money to okay, her to get started on this, on, like, we have to do it, but whether we're gonna have to use uh, CARES Act money, or, 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 or what, what is the plan? Stephanie, do you have a comment on that?
Putting the budget for the zero ninety-seven, two three oh, six ninety-eight, I mean, sorry, eight hundred, for the comfortable uh, payment, um, of my money to handle the lease purchase, but she will need additional money from the office of, handle whatever else you're begging for.
Okay, uh, do, do you wanna put this in the minutes? Or you just gonna use that as?
Do, I think we were scheduled to try to take this up at the next meeting, and go, we go, she can take a list and develop a budget, and then whether it comes from fund O two six, or whether it comes from, and on that day, we can have a day of, this is when we're gonna.
What's the deadline on the CARES Act?
Thirty-four.
Is the year, yeah.
Oh, okay, so we, so we can, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll finish that then.
I do have two questions about two items on here, the generator, I still have questions about that generator in my city First Baptist Church.
Yeah.
Um, this, this not being used for anything, I know there's been some talk about it's too big, I don't quite understand that, but I'm not an electrician. Um, so we need to look into that.
You think, the one Parkway?
Parkway, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I mean, it's a massive.
Who owns that?
County building, yeah.
Okay.
And then also, the, the air conditioning unit for cooling the towers, I do understand those computer towers and all need to have air, but Robbie, have you been in that building?
Yes.
Is, is it possible that we could run some duct work from the existing into that closet that would serve that purpose? Instead of putting another seventy, seventy-two hundred dollar unit in there?
Somebody just run a duct work out of there, there, and just duck into the closet, would have really.
Yeah.
Or I feel like they could put one of those little small minutes out there, and see where that's.
Yeah, I think you could tie, I mean, I'm, yeah, I, I think it's something we need to look at, just to tie in the duct work and run a duct into that room.
Suspended ceiling, ain't it?
Yeah, it's a drop tie, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, it's twenty-four thousand dollars, you know?
Just tie it to the closest room?
I, I think the only problem with that is that, um, when the heat's on in the building, it would be getting heated too. It'd have to have something separate, but it could be a mini split.
That's what I'm saying, you put a mini splitter, if you ducked it in there and cut the, cut the vent off.
Cause if you turn the heat on, it's gonna heat the computer, so.
If you cut the vent off going into there, I mean, I know it's.
It still wouldn't have, it wouldn't have any cooling, though.
Yeah.
We want you to jack, go out there and look.
Okay.
I don't know who would have just looked at it. Sharon first.
Me and Johnny, we'll look, I called Johnny, we made, told me, I feel about.
Head writer's boy?
Yeah, but I thought we talked to Brad one time about.
Yeah, Brad, you gotta take care of that part, that went through his, his office.
We had mentioned that one time before, he and Brad mentioned something like a generator.
It's just sitting.
I know, it's, it's about a forty K W, they need about a ten K W. Um, okay, the last thing I had was, um. Um, okay, the last thing I had was, um, pro forma order of county board to supervise. Uh, apparently the, uh, extension agent, S C S, uh, extension agent, board will provide ten thousand dollars in support of the salary for this individual, but it doesn't name. And I guess it is, uh, Jason Jones, ten thousand, is that a raise or is that a? Have you looked at this, uh, Scott?
Yeah.
Stephanie, do you know anything about that?
I don't know.
You don't know anything about ten thousand dollars extra for?
Ten thousand.
Jason Jones?
Rick?
The extension office?
We looked at this last year, didn't we? Was the extension office?
Yeah, that's the reason.
It's like they, we had to prove it, but they, it was paid by the county.
So it wouldn't cost us any money yet?
I think it doesn't, from what I'm thinking, it's been a year since.
Do you wanna confirm that and we'll take, take that up at the next board meeting?
I'll just scan that sent to Stephanie and that's how it's formation.
Um, alright.
I'm glad you brought up independent legal review.
Got a motion by Mr. Gaines, pending, uh, reviews from the attorney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor?
No.
Alright, any names? Motion carries. Um, any public comments? Public comments? Just, man?
The, uh, beside the extension office out there, there's an area with a lot of liveos and it's partially paved, uh, asphalt, over asphalt paving and a, a, believe a flag pole and then some lighting. Is that county property or does that belong to the bo?
Yeah, that's part of the, I think, part of the lot, what an office used to be.
Is that, is it, is it county? And, and if so,
Turn review.
I, I'm surprised that it hasn't been, um, promoted at all. It's a perfect place for, uh, the, uh, farmer's market type thing for the county. You can have balloons go off there and it's a beautiful place, the property, just, just being not utilized, it's kinda sad.
We'll have to keep that in mind on future reference. Oh, okay, thank, thank you. I've looked at, I think y'all been working on cutting that area, cutting that ditch and all that.
Cleaning all up and they cleaning it up.
Alright, time for round table, uh, Mr. Gray.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, Robbie, I got a call from a gentleman this morning who has some complaints about, I told him we starting at, uh, Red Loop and working our way back to Dixie with this project. But they say they got some quite big, big, big potholes from, uh, Gambier to wherever. Could you just check and see? Uh, Scott?
Sir.
We've been getting emails, uh, from the I T guy about the use of county email account. Do, do we need to do anything with that? Uh, y'all gonna present something to us or how they gonna work?
Yes, it was a simple request from the I T director to, uh, have it in our handbook. It's, although it's implied, this will make it express that any of your work product include emails are property of the county, not used. It's something that was just helpful for a, uh, you know, intellectual property type issue. So that's what the I T guys were asking it. Sent over a draft change. It would be, I mean, really just including one more sentence in our overall thing. I was gonna ask for the board to approve it, that, at my report, but we can go ahead and do it now. It's the prerogative of the board.
I, I'm, I'm gonna wait till your report, so, uh, President can be back again. Um, I did congratulate Ms. Debbie and I also wanna congratulate Mr. Johnny Byrne for being the, uh, Nat Chee's another year and Smooth Grocery, small business of the year and J E Hicks, distributor, was named large business of the year. And, uh, at the last board meeting, I forgot to congratulate a good friend of mine that I met at school with, uh, Danny Knight. He was inducted to the Mystic State, uh, Sports Hall of Fame. And, uh, one of my church members, uh, Ms. Mary Curtis, turned. Uh, she's celebrating her hundredth birthday. Uh, I just wanna say that we, we got a lot going on in our community and, uh, people need to really, really be careful of their surroundings. And, uh, I'm not trying to scare nobody, but you need to be real careful of who you're hanging around right now because, uh, just need to be real careful. And I just hope it's not true, but I just think and pray that it's over with. But in my mind, it's telling me that this stuff is not over with. And I'm just telling the community, they just need to be real, real careful right about now. Uh, uh, of their surroundings and who they're hanging around. Uh, my prayers go out to Pastor Green, Miss Godfrey, the Godfrey family and the Jones family. And the, uh, family of, uh, Jamie Mitchell. And, uh, Pastor Scott lost his wife. He used to be my pastor before he moved on to Christian hope. And, uh, I simply go out to his family. I'm gonna make a motion to get a resolution, uh, at, uh, the Scott family.
Alright, motion by Mr. Gray for the resolution for the Scott family, second by Mr. Gaines. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
Mr. President, uh, when we get a correct number on how much money we got left and, uh, I'm just making a suggestion. I want y'all to look at this. Pass it to the President and Wes. I'm gonna tell you what it is. Um, I don't know how much money we have left on that, um, A R P A funding. But I went to the city meeting and, uh, they got that money to help individuals that actually really needed some help on their houses. It was standing room only in there and a lot of those people was from the county. They couldn't get no help. So what, what I wanna do is once we deal with the money that you asked for and, and see how much money we have left, or do we have any more left? I, I, I just think we need to do another hundred thousand dollar round to, uh, help these individuals, man. They, they got a lot of people out here suffering and they need some help. And I think, uh, it's not asking too much if we do another hundred thousand dollar round to help somebody.
Uh, if, if you wanna make that a motion, I don't have a problem with that because I saw how much good that bit of money did, uh.
Some move. Hundred thousand dollars for a second round that, uh, are they funded for the, uh, we need to contact the net to let them know if it passed.
Okay, need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Ah.
Any names? Motion carries. Yes.
And that, that kinda concludes my report, cause I'm, I'm gonna say this again. And, uh, I, I just hope the preachers get together and, and start praying for this community because we, we have some serious problems here. And I know we got problems all over, but we got some serious problems in Natchez and at this particular time, uh, this community need prayer. And, uh, Mr. President, I know you say you're candidate one and I'm just gonna congratulate you because I'm, I'm the kinda person that when, when the people go out and vote and they vote for whoever they think's supposed to be in, then, uh, I mean, even though I was for the other candidate. But the former president gonna be the president again. And, and I gotta work with whoever been off and I've always been like this, so I wanna congratulate him too. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Gaines?
I'll have a report.
Okay, Mr. Middleton? Alright, Ms. Dean?
Um, I do not have anything.
Okay, Ms. Lewis?
I have one item. I just need to have the tax exemption settlement for October third.
Settlement.
Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any names?
Rep. case.
Mr. Attorney?
The owner of Metro has, you know, really got an empty here today. They've had a personal engagement. He reached out to me, told me, um, he said that they can be available from nineteenth through the twenty-second. So that's as early as tomorrow to the end of this week. Um, you know, Mondays are not an available date for them for the next few weeks. So if y'all would like to get them to meet them here, we could set up a meeting later this week or however y'all wanna do it. Just need to.
Friday, Sunday, Monday, that's what I can't do.
He can have a personal.
Every month?
The next foreseeable few weeks.
Mr. President, I'm just gonna say this. We, 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 we got a situation here. And if we gotta call a special call meeting, we, we need to go on and do it and address our concerns to them, uh, where, where some of this stuff can be alleviated.
Well, I agree with, I, I was gonna bring it up in my report. I didn't know that he had, had a contact. But it's, it's been over four months that we've been trying to get him here and they just like, don't seem gonna show up. Uh, and, and it's, I, I circulated this picture around everybody today. And as you can see, it's a pickup truck full of garbage. And this was Friday before last, uh, coming out of Elgin. Uh, that is not a trash truck. That's a pickup. Uh, and this has been going on for a year. It's either that or a trailer. And you hear the term leach agent all the time. Anything that drips out of that truck is leach agent. And it shouldn't be on our highways. And, and it, it should be in a real garbage truck. And they don't have any garbage trucks for this pickup. Most of them broke down. But, okay, so, uh, does anybody got a date that works for them in the next couple of days?
What was the date, Scott?
Any day but Monday, apparently.
Saturday.
Scott, what was your date? Nineteenth through the twenty-second, I think you said.
Or tomorrow to Friday. It's the nineteenth, Wednesday's the twentieth, Thursday's the twenty-first, Friday's the twenty-second.
Saturday, we need to get it.
Twenty-first, I can't do, I can't do Wednesday.
What day you can do?
I can't do Wednesday.
I mean, what day you can do?
I can do tomorrow or Thursday or Friday.
Ten o'clock tomorrow.
What, 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 is Angela on the phone?
Thursday.
Oh, she got on the phone?
No.
Oh, she's out of town. Uh, what, what day?
I mean, I don't make it work.
I, I'm gonna make it work. Whatever day y'all can make it work, I'm gonna make it work.
If I said Thursday, Angela will be there by Thursday.
I don't know. Can you make Thursday, uh, Wes?
I don't, I don't have anything on my calendar, but that, I mean, uh, I don't.
You wanna do a Thursday afternoon? Uh, it's a motion day on the twenty-first.
I think it is, that's right. Mark.
We're gonna circle back to that in a minute. Uh, Scott, you got anything else? Let me, let me find out.
We need, I, I'd already asked in Ricky's. He actually had, had asked.
What's that again?
It's about the, updating the handbook to include that your for fraud is county, is a, ownership of the county for his own emails or text messages or concern. I had sent an email about my draft.
Oh, I need to, we have a.
While Kevin's on the thing, I did double check the keeping and the rates across America isn't for free.
What is, uh, two, 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 eight, doesn't. Where? Okay, alright. Okay, Thursday's out for me on that. Uh, so do you need a motion to amend the handbook? Is that what?
Yes, sir.
Alright, need a motion to amend the handbook.
Some move.
Moved by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries.
We'll, we'll, we can get it at the end when we reset, or recess, we can recess to a specific date.
Okay.
And we'll get together our handbooks. That way we're all, get our business handled and then pick out the time that we did it. That's okay.
Alright.
Uh, cause I gotta look at mine too. Um, we'll energy a file, a tax objection, and we had settled a tax objection. However, the order never got put in place, uh, in the, uh, final order, little case book. They're also gonna make the minutes. And so we just wanted to amend to include the amounts that we previously determined. Motion?
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gray.
Not changing anything, just clarifying a previous minutes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Most, any names? Motion carries.
Add item to the term.
Gray.
You have something, Brian?
No, no.
I've got a good time.
Did you?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Are, are you, uh, and, uh, Ms. Washington, are you still on the phone?
Yes.
Do you have a, do you have anything for us?
Um, I have a, I get a motion to do an interfund loan between fund zero-zero-nine and zero-zero-one and go to the executive board meeting, um, minutes to, um, we have a fee that, um, has matured and written in to replace the fund. Fund zero-zero-nine for one million, nine hundred thirty-four thousand, ninety-nine dollars and fifty, that I said, this one, I three, four, zero, two, nine, seven, four, five, zero, zero, one, five, zero, zero, five.
Alright, is that the CARES Act money?
It's a repay, oh, no, it's a repay of, uh, interfund loan.
Okay. So, alright, moved by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries. Okay?
Um, I need to ask for permission to suspend compliance with any other records pertaining to dealing with the O P U S element. We have requests, um, they can be answered and we need to preserve all of those records and different things that they make to dealing with anything pertaining to the O P U S element. We want to have it spread, minutes.
Okay, need a motion to spread this. Be there.
Some move.
Moved by Ms. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any names? Motion carries.
Can I do a request for items to be returned, to be determined in executive stations pertaining to the performance of personnel or, and, or internal issues with, uh, the department?
Okay. What else? Is that all?
Yep, there, there's a, there's a.
Okay, thank you. Oh.
Y'all talked about Friday for that meeting. Don't forget the sheriff's thing, that thing from nine to eleven.
No, but y'all can't do it tomorrow?
I can do it any day. I was just, I was just trying.
I'll do it tomorrow.
Ten o'clock, good? Or you wanna do it in the afternoon?
Scott, Scott, just Scott's here that way so he can check his game.
It should be okay, but I'm just making sure.
That's why I said that.
Okay, while he's doing that, uh, the, uh, hearing was scheduled for, uh, Wednesday, I guess, uh, with the, uh, Gray River Utility with the Public Service Commission had been postponed till, uh, December the third, I believe. Yes. Uh, so, uh, those people won't know about getting relief for a couple more days, obviously.
December the third?
Yes. Yes. The hearing will require a full day. The evidentiary hearing will occur on Wednesday, December the fourth. December third is for cut, public comments. Dan, would you like a copy of this?
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I don't think I have anything else. I think we took care of everything else. Um, all right, need a, a motion for close determination. Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Middleton. All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.